North Branford Planning and Zoning Regular Meeting, January 4th, 2024. Happy New Year, everyone. You please rise and salute the flag with us.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First point I'd like to introduce the commission members seated here tonight. My immediate left is Ron, senior regular member. His left is Trish Nice, regular member. To her left is Paul Varano, regular member. To my far right is Janet Crainer, returning secretary at the administrative table. I'm sorry?
Not a regular.
She's a regular recording. Regular recording member. One of the paid members of the commission. Oh, two paid. And then at the administrative table today is David Perkins, our top player. My name is Robert Knauk. I'm the chairman tonight for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Next order of business, consider approval of minutes from December 14th. Unfortunately, there's not enough members that were present at that meeting to have a forum to approve these minutes. I'd like to make note that in the December 14th meeting, the meeting minutes from October 19th were tabled, were continued. We're having to continue, so we need to add that to the next agenda. Okay? Moving on, next order of business is a public hearing and possible action for application 2023-18, amendment to the zoning regulations. It's a continuation of the public hearing we had last meeting in December. What I'd like to do is kind of lay out the rules of the statement, like we make an opening statement relative to the public hearing. Purpose of the hearing is your all pertinent testimony in support of and in opposition to the application before the commission. Public hearing will be open, testimony will be heard in the following order, and explaining the proposal project, which already happened previously in last meet, last month. The staff and commission to question and comment. It is our proposal. Turn of public app, I'll begin to speak in support of and opposition to the request. When addressing the commission, please come up to the microphone and begin by stating your name and address. One side has spoken, the public hearing will be closed. No further public discussion will be entertained. After the public hearing is closed, the commission will vote on the request. The one question I have, Dave, is did we read and do we need to read the text amendment into the record?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll attach that to the meeting once we finish it?
Yes.
Okay. We have a letter from the South Central Connecticut Regional Planning Commission. It states, "Thank you for sharing the proposed zoning regulation text amendment. The Regional Planning Commission reviews your proposal at its meeting on Thursday, December 14, 2023. By resolution, the Regional Planning Commission has determined that the proposed zoning regulation text amendment does not appear to cause any negative intermunicipal impacts to the towns in the South Central region, nor does there appear to be any impacts to the habitat or ecosystem of Long Island Sound. Furthermore, the proposed regulation aligns with the regional plan of conservation and development by both supporting housing development in the areas and supporting infrastructure by current as the diversity of the other regions' housing stock." That was dated December 18, 2023. We received also, before I opened the public hearing, we received a letter from SLR International Corporation dated January 3rd, 2024. There's four bullets that I read through this, Dave? Or try to read this?
I think they're here to make a presentation and they probably summarize it.
Okay. So that being said, I'd like to open a public hearing for those in support of the text amendment proposed by the zoning commission. Please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, commission. My name is Mark Forlenza, and I'm with the Belfonte's Companies. We're here to present just a few comments on the text amendment that you're considering tonight. Just a couple of things. The first thing is, we appreciate you actually taking upon yourselves to do this amendment. We think this is a great thing in compliance with your plan of development. And we were before you, maybe a couple of years ago, trying to do something similar. So thank you for doing this. We do appreciate it. We do have just a couple of comments on the text that you have proposed that you have before you. And that's why we hired SLR to have their planning department just prepare just a couple of comments for your consideration. So one of the principals of SLR, John Mylone, is going to present this planning memo that was done by their planning department. And again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. My name is John Mylone. I'm a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I'm here on behalf of our firm, but our memorandum was prepared by Vince McDermott, who's a senior planner in our firm, AICP senior planner. You have the memorandum, I think, in your possession, so I'm just going to summarize it very briefly. As Mark said, we did this on behalf of Belfonte Associates, who has a property that would possibly be under consideration if this were approved. We support this amendment to your regulations. We feel it's consistent with your plan of development and does provide for more diversity in housing, which is something the plan of development was supportive of. So as Mark said, we also commend you on moving forward. We just have a couple of minor comments or suggestions that might consider as you go through this. First of all, we recognize that it's a two-step process. The first step being amendment of the zoning map, followed by a special use permit application, which would include a site plan and more detailed information. We ask you to consider adding schematic architecture as part of the first phase of the process, of the amendment process. And I'll explain why that, we think that would be helpful in a minute in our next comment. That has to do with the section in your proposed regulations having to do with building height. For that, we suggest two considerations. One is, as I just said, to address building height in step one. We think it's important that an applicant understands what would be acceptable in that regard relative to an application. So by presenting as part of the conceptual site plan their proposed building height information and some conceptual architecture, the commission would be in a position to decide if that area of concern which you've identified in the regulation is something that is addressable or manageable as part of the zoning process. Rather than have the zone approved, have an applicant go back with a fairly detailed site plan with a lot of expense and a lot of effort, only to find that the height becomes an issue and that could dramatically change an application. So we ask that you consider that as part of the zone change process. And in addition to that, you have wording in the regulation where you can manage the height of the buildings either to one or two stories. We think that might be a little bit more confining than might be normal in a multifamily development. We ask you to consider maybe providing some provisions in there that you can ask for architectural elements or other features to address or minimize the impact of height if that's still an issue as you look at it during the zone change process. So again, those are minor refinements to the application, which we think would make it, the process, I think, just be a little bit cleaner as you go through it, so you wouldn't get halfway through only to find that there's still a significant issue with a potential application. And then lastly, you do have a 50% impervious surface requirement, and that's reasonable, but maybe a little restrictive. We see that maybe it might be a few percent over that. That might be necessary particularly on a small site. And we understand that as the way the regulation's written, that pervious pavers or other features might not apply to that. We'd ask that you just make sure that's clear so that one could count on that being an opportunity for them as part of a design feature. Those are the only suggestions we have, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can I have any?
Thank you for hearing our.
I'd just like to make just one more comment, just in support of what John had just said. Since we're supportive of and we intend to use this floating zone on one of our piece of properties, I just want to speak from just from our perspective. When, if you make these changes as we suggest, at the zone change application, we then can provide you with evidence and debate about what is appropriate for height at that time. And if you do not support what we're saying, then you just wouldn't apply, you know, that zone to our property. To do it the other way, we would come in, we would apply for a zone change amendment to the property, or we would try for a map, we'd apply for a map change. We then follow it up with a site plan. We could get through the process halfway and then realize that, you know, you don't agree with us on the height. And that just wastes a lot of time from our perspective and probably hundreds of thousands of dollars from our perspective. So what we're suggesting the process to be like it is, is well, you know, we file the map amendment. We, you know, we will provide evidence that the height of 45 feet is sufficient for this property. You can, that's why we included the architecture. At that time, you can make a determination to put the overlay zone over that property if you agree with us. If you don't agree with us, you don't put it over, and then we all go home, as opposed to having us have a two-step process and then find down the road that you don't agree with our, you know, with our position with respect to height. That would save months and hundreds of thousands of dollars for us. That's why we want to structure it like that. And that's really all we're asking. And so thank you again. I just want you to clarify it just a little bit more.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Would anybody else like to speak in favor of the proposed text amendment?
Hi, I'm Liz Kaplan, 33 Maltby Lane. I'm the Chair of Economic Development. Happy New Year, everybody. I did come to the December meeting along with a few members of the Economic Development Commission, and I did read a letter which should be in your packets as far as that goes. So I just wanted to just reiterate, there is a letter there that the Economic Development Commission does support this, you know, overlay zone change, and we thank you for your due diligence in this process. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Would anybody else like to speak in favor of our text amendment? Anyone else? Hearing none. Anybody opposed to the text amendment proposed to the town? Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Hearing none. I'd like to make a motion, like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is now closed. In light of the new suggestions, go ahead.
Who made the motion?
Liz. In light of the new, in light of some suggestions proposed by the Belfonte Corporation and Liz's suggestion in favor of it, I think it'd be a good idea that the commission take some additional time and continue this text amendment until the next meeting. I'll entertain a motion, continue this to the next meeting.
I make a motion to continue application 2023-18 to the next meeting on, I don't know when.
Eighteen?
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. I could add.
Can we have motion second?
Second.
Okay, motion second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Four to zero. So we're going to continue this text amendment discussion in the next meeting. So thank you very much for coming today for your support of our text amendment. Thank you very much. With that being said, we move on to item B 2023-19723 to Tucker Road. The applicant is not here, and our town planner will now take the reins and explain what the situation is.
So I gave you a report, staff report, and I did review the application yesterday. I'm not quite sure why I didn't really see them till then, but I looked at it and you need, for the interior lot, you need 60,000 square feet of lot area for the rear lot. And this lot has 58,000 plus, so they don't meet the requirements of the subdivision regulations. The front lot's okay, it's 40,000 square feet, it has the frontage. Unfortunately, you can't just divide this lot into an interior lot and a front lot and meet the requirements. The plan also doesn't really show the square of the lot. It doesn't show the setback lines. It doesn't show proposed driveways. It doesn't show impermeable areas. It doesn't show the rear line buffer area. The plan is basically incomplete and doesn't comply with the regulations. I did talk to the applicant this morning, who thought he was applying for a variance, but he obviously applied for a subdivision, got a variance. I'm not sure that he'd get a variance. He plans on trying to get a variance to split the lots, and then he would come back and apply again. So I would recommend that you just deny it without prejudice. If he comes back, we can use the same fees, so he doesn't have to pay twice. It's a difficult road to go through to get a variance.
Okay.
So that's my recommendation.
Any questions or concerns from the commission?
Nope.
So I'll entertain a motion to deny without prejudice the application 2023-19723 to Tucker Road?
I make a motion to deny without prejudice, prejudice, application 2023-19, 723 to Tucker Road.
Very good. We have motion second?
Second.
Second, Ron. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries to deny the application 2023-19723 to Tucker Road. All right, all business. Next item on the agenda, request for a new street number at Chekerelli's Harrison Hill Farm on Middleton Avenue to be known as 1591 Middleton Avenue?
So this is the lot behind the Mill Pond Tavern, the cornfield?
Yep.
And it's currently known as Zero Middleton Avenue? And they'd like to have a real number? So for public health purposes, when they say there's a problem and they're at 1591 Middleton Avenue, everybody knows what that means.
Okay. So you're looking from the commission to have a?
Regulation says that you guys get to do street numbers.
Yes.
Do we want to do street numbers? Can't be zero.
This question, has it been like that for so long? What's changed?
Well, they've had more activity up there than they've had in the past, and it's just?
Been there for like 100 years?
Right.
What's changed?
Nothing's changed.
Concerned? How is it listed on the tax rolls?
Zero Middleton Avenue.
Okay.
And there are a lot of those around town, empty lots and back lots that are just?
Okay. But there's still access to 1591, right? Obviously goes through?
Well, there's no mailbox, so there's no real need for a mailing address.
Correct.
You know, they've done some activities up there.
I'm aware of that, yes.
So from a safety point of view, they should have a number?
Yeah.
Maybe we should revisit this while we have a full commission?
I don't know if that's necessary. I think it'd be all right. Just, it's a group effort, so what do you guys think?
We've done numbers in the past, and they're pretty benign.
Are there other Zero Middleton Avenues?
What?
I mean, that particular lot is Zero Middleton Avenue. Middleton Avenue is long in Nordford. Are there other properties that are labeled Zero Middleton Avenue?
Oh, yeah.
As a matter of fact, if I remember correctly, we also did something on Middleton Avenue not too long ago. I think it was last year before, Paul, you were here. Similar situation, there wasn't a number assigned to the property.
They're all over the place. It's not unusual that a vacant property doesn't have an address because it doesn't have a need for a mailing or?
Does it even have access to?
I believe it's through the driveway to?
Landlocked, is it?
That's how you gain access there now, is through that across the bridge.
Yeah, the bridge over?
Okay. So it seems like a landlocked piece of property right now. Has no driveway to Middleton Avenue. So is there a, is there an easement?
I think there's an easement by implication at least.
So are those people are on the application also to put a number in?
There's no requirement. The request is simply to label the property with a number. Has no connotations about use or?
Odd that it would pop up out of nowhere. Then everything else, if we need to place after that, Paul, for any of our questions for development or anything associated with the property, then we know where it is.
How did she use 1591? You just chose it? I was curious.
With the assessor, yeah.
Oh, okay. So do we pick out of the?
No, no, it's logical.
Somehow has to fall.
It's logical, yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Ron, you're contemplating?
Oh, yeah, a lot of comments. How many acres is that in the back? I know they farm it. It seems like a pretty big?
I have no idea.
It's a pretty good chunk of property.
It's significant.
Yeah. And access is on a 25-foot right-of-way. I assume it's a right-of-way.
I believe it's 62.5 acres, if I'm correct. Most likely, I am.
So the development wouldn't be an issue because it's access. I mean, you can't even cut a road in on 25 feet, right? It's got to be 50.
When he comes in front of us, we'll know what he's talking about. 1591, oh, we know where you live. We know what you want to develop versus zero.
Is anybody out there from?
No, it's not for a public, not a public hearing. It's not an application, just assigning a street address.
The town just decided to pick a property?
The property owner.
Oh, the property owner, all right.
He wanted to, he brings it to us and says, hey, I want to be identified instead of being non-binary, whatever you want to call it. He wants to be identified as something, though.
You can find him after 100 years.
Yeah, exactly. Right, so it's a process, Paul. So I'm assuming the next step would be, hey, I'm going to do this, maybe. But now he's, now he can locate where 1591 is.
Nothing's been played for that stuff. Anybody put anything up for that property to propose anything, right?
No.
Just guy came and said I want to address.
It was, there were some hayrides there this fall. I think there was maize there, there was some activity there.
So people could find it.
And I think the question was more emergency.
Especially if there's other Zero Middleton Avenues, which one do they go to if there's an emergency?
Can't let that into ways.
Yeah.
Liability to, Paul.
Sure.
You can have hayrides, insurance, you blow, blah, 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 all the other. Everything goes along with that public input on your property, so makes sense. So if we're comfortable with it, that's the right, Paul? I mean, you'll be okay with it like that?
I'll abstain from any voting in the room. For now, until we get a little bit more on my end.
Okay.
I'm good.
Then I'll entertain a motion to accept the address at 1591 Middleton Avenue?
I make a motion to accept the request for a new street number at Chekerelli's Harrison Hill Farm on Middleton Avenue to be known as 1591 Middleton Avenue.
We have a motion of a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries three to one? So like I said, that'd be written, 1591 now exists. New business, item six, application 2023-21, 280 Branford Road, B2 Zone. It's an application for, request for section 23, or section A, line C dash one, to operate a liquor store in building number one, formerly IGA store, including renovation to the building exterior lot and minor modifications to the parking lot. Owner, JSM Properties, LSC applicant, ABS LSC. The applicant here, would you mind coming up to state your name and address for us? And ask about your project?
You didn't bring your own tripod?
Not just, I'm used?
You like the NT?
Yeah, well, you know, I brought mine last time, and then it was, you know, I ended up fumbling with it, so. Good evening, my name is Jim Gallagher. I'm from Napier's Young Engineers. We're at 1355 Middleton Avenue, right in Nordford. And I represent the application in front of you tonight. The subject parcel is 280 North Branford Road, but it's more likely known as Central Plaza. The applicant tonight has a place of business on the subject parcel, and he wants to move to a different location. Right now, his business is in that, on the right-hand side, after you go through, after you go past McDonald's. And he's going to move into the place where IGA used to be. This is his existing location over here on the right-hand side. He's going to come in and occupy the old Rite Aid, I mean, the old IGA parcel. In talking with Dave, he's asked for a couple of modifications to the site. There's four street trees that are proposed, you know, because the ones that were there are now long gone. And there's a couple of parking spaces that are going to be added in the back to be able to meet the zoning regulations or requirements. It was okay, I didn't use it. I do have, you don't mind if I wing this a little bit? Do have some renderings of what they're intending to do, some outside improvements and some interior improvements for the store. And are actively looking to be able to move into the new location. The reason why we're here is because with the change of use, I need to present in front of you. And that's the purpose of the application tonight.
Did they buy the building?
I'm sorry?
Did they buy the building?
Uh, no. No, the parcel owner of Central Plaza still owns the buildings in the site, and they have a lease for the building, for that section of the building.
You're going to change the facade as well? Looks awesome.
I'm sorry?
That's the new, okay, that's your proposed? Excellent.
Yeah, the applicant has, owns Townline Liquors over there by, what's it called now? The, and the one in Nordford Center. I still call it Agway, I forget what it's called.
I think the facade in the front is really attractive and fits into the town's character.
Yeah, that's the goal, is to try. If you look at both of his other, both of his other, both of his other facilities, you know, they're, you know, done a lot. The one in Nordford Center, they've done a lot in that plaza there to make it look better. And obviously, the one over by Dalton's is another place that's, that looks great. It's got great curb appeal. They take good care of their properties. They're a good resident, a good client, a good customer.
Now, this isn't adding a new liquor? Now, this isn't adding a new liquor store.
No, they're they're.
The other one will be abandoned and this one.
Right, they're gonna move from the the one with the curved roof, the uh, there's uh, you know, the one to the right-hand side of, I have to go past McDonald's, and they're gonna move it to the to the piece in the back.
No, I was just thinking of the, I think there's a state regulation, you can only have so many liquor stores per population.
So they'll be moving that liquor license from.
Yeah, they have, yeah, they have.
Current store to the I G A.
Yeah, they have an existing liquor license in this building here for the use in this building here, they're just gonna change it over to this building here.
Can we should we have any questions, concerns?
Can you talk about the um restriping in the parking lot or talk about parking?
Okay, um, the the there is there's, let me switch to this page. Now I know what you're talking about, Dave.
Oh, you broke it.
Oh, that's it.
I just talked to the finance director to authorize purchase of a new easel.
I I give you mine, but it won't work any better than this one.
That's not on our budget, and if it is, we'd have to go up with a tax system.
The 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 parking is so they're gonna they're gonna redo some redo some striping in this area here, they're also gonna put some shielding lighting so that you're complying with complying with dark skies lighting along the parking area. And the striping in this area needs to be redone, uh, the trees are gonna be redone in here, there's also a couple of extra handicap spaces that are gonna be added over in this here to be compliant with the count. So they're gonna they're gonna try and dress up that corner there and and make it attractive.
This is adding more parking spaces?
It's it's diffi- it's difficult to tell how many parking spaces are in that plaza.
Yes.
To start with, much less the way they're designed. And the owner of the plaza is somewhat obstinate in terms of requests for information from the town planner. And sort of cleaning up the whole plaza because it is a bit of a a bit of a mess, so this is an improvement. That we're working on and the applicant is paying for all these improvements himself without any help from the landlord. And the landlord sort of says. Do it your way or or do it.
Oh, it's leave it or take it.
Yeah, leave, right, I was gonna say take it or leave it, but it is leave it or take it. Um, and and the the actual cost of those individual parts is is being discussed with the with the property owner as we speak.
There are some current issues over there that the um land use department's dealing with.
Like what?
There's an open manhole cover, there's some grates that are missing, there's parking that's mislabeled, there's signs that are wrong, there, I mean, it's just a total, a total mess and. And to try to hold up this project to say fix the whole plaza isn't in our best interest. At the same time. We gotta do something at some point because now that the right aid is gone, you've got another empty spot, you've got the new central. You know, bar that seems to be doing well and and I mean, we'd like to see the plaza come back to life and this may be a very good start. So dealing with the parking situation and how many parking spaces it needs, it seems to me that there's a lot of parking.
Yeah, there's a there's a there's a lot of shared parking going on in the.
Oh, no, no, I'm just referring to there's a couple of restaurants in there also, when there's more than one event going on, parking is at a premium.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I mean, Ron, there's there's some shared parking going on.
So there will be there will be new parking to the railroad track side of the building.
Down here.
That will be more specific for the liquor store.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be uh specific for the liquor store.
We don't require a lighting plan from the applicant?
There there is, there are a couple, you address the lighting.
Yeah, this uh, there's some lighting along the the existing building, as Wes said, they got, some of the lighting has just been changed. The lighting that's there is all gonna be getting the the shields, the dark shots, the dark skies initiative shields, so the lighting is down lighting and and will be adequate for all the this area in there. Yeah, and there's light, there's lighting on the the far edge of the of the parking area adjacent to the the railroad tracks.
Okay.
And they'll have the same down skies. Yeah, down lighting, dark skies down lighting.
Understood, any other questions or comments from the commission?
No, I think it's great, I was just in there the other day, you know, for the dinner of champions, running children around to sports McDonald's and I was like, ugh, it's just so unattractive in there, I'm like. I was just thinking like, what is gonna go in here, what can be like, something needs to be done and it's great.
What are you gonna finish?
Well, we're gonna try as soon as possible, it's it's uh, the economy is not helping right now, the interest rates are so high, no help from landlord. And especially like when you don't own a building, it's it's quite a bit hard to finish any project and that's where we are running into a lot of issues. But we started, so we we're gonna finish it, that's that's the goal, yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Hopefully within this year.
Well, we wish you luck with that one, so with that being said, I don't have any, Dave, any more comments, questions?
I think it's a great proposal.
Okay, so I think we're ready for a motion? For the application?
I make a motion to approve application twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, two eighty Branford Road.
Hey, was there any comments, did he address all your, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine, yeah.
Was there any additional stuff?
There was there was no staff reports, I think I do have a a motion here that has no um. No major conditions.
Okay, awesome.
Can I have your name, Jim?
Sure, it's Jim Gallagher.
Gallagher.
I'll give it to the reader first.
The reader, yeah, rewind.
Darn, I thought I was getting away with saying. Alright, ready?
Thank you, sir.
I move to approve planning and zoning application twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one. Site plan request under section twenty-three, schedule A, use C one to operate a liquor store in building number one, former I G A store, including renovations to building exterior lighting, minor modifications to the parking lot at two eighty Branford Avenue. Assessor's map twelve, lot sixty-eight, zone B two, owner J S M Properties LLC, applicant B V S LLC. As contained in submitted application documents and shown on the following plans slash specifications. Property located at Central Plaza, two eighty Branford Road, North Branford, Connecticut, prepared by Napier's and Young Engineers, Inc., parking plan for liquor store dated December fifth, twenty twenty-three. Um, then, town line line of spirits, two eighty Branford Road, North Branford, Connecticut, prepared by J F Design and Associates, containing the following sheets. Sheet S K one, sheet S K two, sheet S K three, sheet S K four, sheet A one, sheet A two. And with the following standard conditions, number two, there are no special conditions so far.
Okay, thank you, Trish, you have a second on the motion? Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries, look at your move and renovation.
Thank you, thank you very, very much.
Appreciate it.
Literally was just there the other night like, oh, something's gotta be done. Why did that happen with the lotto? God, I don't know why.
Lame whether that place hit the lotto, because I wanna spend money.
You're gonna have to pay half of it. Yeah, I asked if you wanted to go monthly. Thank you again.
Next order of business is other business zoning regulation updates.
You know, I, there is one regulation that has been. I've been missing. Public Act twenty-three one forty-two. Does not. A municipality may not subject the operation of a licensed group child daycare located in residence to any conditions. Other than those imposed by the commissioner pursuant to this subsection. If the group childcare complies with all codes and ordinance applicable to single and multifamily dwellers. So basically, we can't regulate group child daycare homes. Which we currently do. So I've written up some regulations that basically eliminate our regulations about child daycare.
That's interesting.
But it's not blessing you.
Thank you, God bless you. Okay, so that's in the works?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's a state mandate and they're after us to make sure we change our regulations.
But they comply, they have, as long as they comply with the state stuff.
We're good, we'll just change them, I'll I'll send it to SCROG and get it in the works and we'll get it on the agenda.
Very good.
The other thing I would sort of look at is the interior lot regulation. And you should probably just review it, but the interior lot regulation says that in any subdivision. One lot out of five can be an interior lot. So basically, you get four lots with a front and one lot interior. And the regulations go on and on about that, and then the last paragraph says, but if you just wanna have an interior lot, that's fine. And here's the requirement for that. So basically, the one out of five is thrown out the window.
Indicating.
Which is why we have so many interior lots all around town, I mean, there's a ton of them. And I I think it's, I think the regulation was changed to allow interior lots as a right. Because of the mountains on this side of the hills and you can't sort of get roads and it just sort of makes sense with our topography to allow more interior lots for development. As you go up the hills on the east and the west.
Sure.
But when they wrote that regulation, they forgot to throw out the older regulations. Which is not uncommon.
So we just need to clean it up a little bit?
Correct.
Okay. Well, you're you're earning your keep, Dave, we appreciate it.
Well, it's been a year now.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, I think we've done a lot more here.
Yeah, the recap of twenty twenty-three, I think we took care of, I don't know, pretty close to ten regulations, most of them, some of them mandated by.
The bylaws.
Yep, the bylaws, so um, with that being said, I like that set of agenda for twenty twenty-four. So I just tabled, trotted down some things, was the multifamily housing district. Way back when, I think in the spring, Dave had a hit list for us in twenty twenty-three, one of them was assigned, the little wavy ones and the board signs, we never really kind of closed that up. We had conversations about, Dave also brought up the zoning, bulk zoning standards, but could be modified a little bit and changed in certain ways, we didn't really get that off the table, maybe we can bring that forward. Cannabis, we need to take care of that. Building fee schedule, we were working towards trying to get that done based on the small, last year we're working on uh. Fee schedules across the entire region, I guess, and kind of come up with a updating our our fee schedule to be more in line with surrounding towns. Solar fields was one that we, power plants, as Ron likes to call it, that we didn't really, we have kind of threw it aside, but we have commercial, residential, and commercial can be on roofs now as well in some places. And then last but not least is Route eighty zone changes, we talked about kind of making Route eighty more B one, B two, kind of moving the R forties out. And working through, working through, making those changes. I think would be just a kind of a goals and consideration that we should consider, just as a as a matter of fact, so. Uh, Route eighty zoning changes brings me into a conversation with Economic Development Commission. We had, Liz was here from the chairman from that commission, we met with them last year. The assistant town manager reached out to me and we're gonna move forward with another meeting with the E D C in cooperation with town, Dave and the town manager and us. To kind of put our heads together, see where we could make some fundamental changes that would help economic development within the town from our changes and in cooperation with the E D C, so. That's kind of my goals and consideration for twenty twenty-four under the zoning rigs. E D C, business. Dave, uh, town planners report.
We um, we're.
I'm sorry.
I just, I just wanted to bring up.
You wanna add something?
Yes.
Oh, perfect.
I'm assuming, just other business, um, I do the SCROG meetings, but just because of my kid's schedule, I'm I'm not able to go to many of them, so I just wanted to. Be transparent about that and if you guys are continuing, if you guys are fine, that's fine, if somebody else wants to be, I don't even know, what am I?
You're the liaison.
Oh, if somebody else wants to be the liaison, because I just, there are five fifteen.
I think your name is on this letter, actually.
Yes, it is. Um, I think there are five fifteen one Thursday a month, but just often with my kid's schedule, I'm just like, I just can't go game, can't go game, I mean, if you guys don't mind me not being there a lot, then my name could be there, but if somebody want. If we want more information and want one of us there. I have no problem changing, but I just wanted, I've been meaning to put that out there for a while, but. Just not many brain cells left.
Thank you, Trish, I appreciate you bringing it up because basically the town has a list of all the boards and commissions and there's no one listed under the officially for planning zoning representative for the SCROG.
Oh, I mean, like, literally seven years.
Yeah, there's. No one ever read up to put your name in there, so.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I don't mind, I have no problem doing that, I do it when I can, as long as, you know, you don't care that I'm not.
Secondly, it's supposed to be our annual meeting also. Is charged with assigning someone for the, one, the In the Metlins, and two, the SCROG.
Oh.
So we had that meeting, so maybe we can choose amongst ourselves, see what Barry or Paul or.
I'm indifferent.
You know, who wants to do it and we'll put it in and we'll vote on and Dave will submit it to the town.
It's not, it's not demanding, um, it's just I feel bad that I often can't go and.
Mostly zooms, right, it's hybrid?
It's hybrid and it's just, it's really, unless something is horribly horrible for the environment, most things are just recommend, recommend, recommend.
Right.
I just, like I said, I feel bad, I'm also, you guys know, I just haven't been able to go in forever. And often enough when I am going, it's like I'm standing on the practice field, multitasking. But, yep, to be continued.
And it is, it is a. When you made a regulation change, you used to have to notify all the abutting towns about a regulation change so the commissions would find out. You don't have to do that anymore, you just send it to SCROG and you guys, it's that commission, hear it. And that way you can report back to us about what's going on in the other towns.
Yeah.
So that's the mission was to try to slow down that, just notifying the other town and letting them worry about it. Rather than having a possible discussion amongst all region.
Okay, excellent, thank you, Trish, I appreciate it. Uh, Dave, do you want to talk or speak to the North Branford Road safety audit that came up?
The North Branford Road safety audit, I have not gotten any comments, I need to reply back to them with comments. If you looked at it closely, one of their recommendations was to take Middletown Avenue and Forest. And combine them at the gas station.
I can't picture it.
Move the traffic light to the south and actually eliminate the gas station on the peninsula.
Oh, wow.
Which seemed like a pretty major deal to me.
I can't even picture that, but I can, I'm bad at this.
Around about there, but why would you eliminate?
Well, this one, they just have a a turn, they just have an intersection going right through the middle of the gas station. And they recommend we buy the gas station and destroy it. Which seems like something we don't. Which seems like something we don't really wanna do. Piggybacking on that, we have received a grant from South Central Regional Council of Governments to study the Northford Center in more detail. We had a kickoff meeting with the consultant B L companies, I believe it is, ten days ago or so to get a scope of work. So we're working on a scope of work. We should have that probably in the next ten days or so. We have to forward that to the D O T and get it blessed by the D O T. And then we can start working on the grant. It's a two-year, fifty thousand dollar grant each year, so it's total of a hundred thousand dollars. We've talked about that sort of spur road that would go from Mansfield to Forest, or at least from Artsley to Forest, and create a sense of community inside of there. The consultant for B L companies is a resident of North Branford. That's a real plus. I'm really excited about making a plan that's gonna be something we can fulfill as opposed to just another study that reiterates what we've done for the last thirty years.
We studied it, there needs to be a change.
Yeah, we want more engineering, we want more guts to it, so that we can apply for a community connection grant and actually implement the plan. But I'm really excited.
I was gonna ask that very question, exactly the way you described it. Because that was one of your your hits that you sent us, that when you drafted a for the SCROG for Unified Plan Work Program Study, so we're gonna get another study. I was trying to read through your notes, just trying to, we got one study from this company, I mean.
We got the Road Safety Audit.
Yep, and now we're gonna have B L put together another more comprehensive plan. They tried to take the two thousand six and the twenty twenty-three suggestion and kind of bring it together?
Correct.
Okay.
And actually get more detail into it, more engineering, more practicality, more costs, or more oop rather than just flowery language.
Yeah.
What was missing? What was missing from, in in the two thousand six study, they looked at also the one fifty and twenty-two interchange, intersection at the angle. Is that any part of the dialogue in this? Okay, so just focus on this and kind of leave that for the state to kind of figure it out. The, one of the comments on page thirteen of that was clarify North Branford firehouse lighting, is that a concern? Was there an issue with that? And from the, they didn't really make mention of it in detail other than the fact that there needs to be better lighting, and I don't understand what that meant, whether it be safety concern for the fire truck to get out of the, get out of it, or was there lighting necessarily illuminated? Or it was confusing, like, well, is that a safety issue? It says it needs more lighting?
Well, now I have a good comment.
Do they control that? Can they control that stop, that stoplight right there or no? Was that it?
They, well, I don't think it's possible right now. Well, I don't know what's. I believe the fire truck, each and every fire truck, and I think in our town, the fire trucks have an emitter. And on every traffic signal, you'll see a little black box with a little point on it, looks like that. And the emitter hits the box and tells the computer in the traffic signal to change the direction to green when it gets in the, when the emergency vehicle, both ambulance and fire trucks, are going in that direction, and it changes them to get there. Some firehouses have stoplights, red lights.
Yeah.
You know, stop, the fire truck comes in and out, backs in, that kind of thing. And maybe he was alluding to that, but it's so close to intersection, I don't know. So that was one of my comments. Was there a further timeline, Dave, associated with the the funding, the the studies? Can we have some kind of sequence of, of what point in time we could have something in hand? And then, what's the process after that? Is the town required that, I'm assuming the town has to put up some money for the actual construction when it comes to that? For sidewalks, if I believe correctly, most towns, when it comes to sidewalks, if they don't have it, the town has to pay to put them in. The state doesn't pay for sidewalks unless the sidewalks are pre-existing. That was one of my my questions, but it's further down the road at this point in time.
Right, so the road safety audit is done. We just need to sign off on it. And then it will get passed from the consultant back to the state, and they'll accept it, and we'll have a road safety audit report.
Okay.
The the grant, we're just starting on now, we're just getting the scope of service. It's a, it's a two-year grant, but it's probably gonna be a three-year grant. By the time we start, it's gonna be July of twenty twenty-four, so it's gonna go to July of twenty twenty-six. And hopefully, the outcome will be material that will allow us to apply for a community development grant of anywhere from eight hundred thousand dollars to two million dollars to build the sidewalks.
Okay, that answers my question. Okay, that takes it for that one. Thank you, Dave. I appreciate your input. If you want to cut me in on any of that conversation, I'd really love it.
We're just, we're just starting, so there's gonna be lots of community outreach, and it's gonna be a great program.
Okay, awesome. I'm also also very excited, it's one of my my goals since getting on this commission, to do something up there.
Right.
You know? The other thing, I want to back up a little bit. The frustration from the Central Plaza appearance and all the deficiencies, I'll call them, right? There isn't any zoning, because we talked about fines or anything, that there's nothing, no such thing could be applied to the property owner to improve the property at all?
So there is a a state statute that allows, by ordinance, the ability to give tickets for zoning violations. It's part of the blight process, it's also part of the wetlands process. It's something that we're gonna discuss. The commit, the town council's talking about the blight ordinance. And we're gonna talk about zoning violations and wetland violations at the same time. And whether we can actually do citations, it's not tickets, citations. So I can issue a citation, hundred dollars a day for a zoning violation. So after a week, it's five hundred dollars. And after two weeks, it's a thousand dollars. And it's pretty nice to write a letter every ten days and say, it's going up a thousand dollars, what are you gonna do about it now? And you can actually assess those fines like traffic tickets. And then you can actually go and get a judgment. And if you got a judgment, they're gonna have to pay, you know, twenty-five dollars a week. What's the minimum that the judge has sort of ordered you to pay? But at least it's a process.
There's something versus nothing.
Okay.
I I mean, right now, he's sort of in violation of site plan, and I don't have a whole lot of ammunition to to make him do what he doesn't wanna do, but with the fire marshal, there is an open manhole cover on the property right now, and he's been pretty responsive when there's like imminent danger.
Because he doesn't wanna get sued.
Yeah.
Right, right, exactly.
If, in a situation like that, do we have the ability to, like an open manhole? I mean, that's a major safety issue. Do we have the ability to, if the landlord isn't being responsive, to go in there, fix the problem, and here's your bill?
Back charger?
Yeah.
I I think we can, we can do that. Billing them is always a little difficult, but we can certainly go in and just fix the problem. But we don't really like to do that.
Yeah, you'll never see your money.
I mean, typically, what we've done is gone and put cones up and put stuff around it and and taking care of the the safety issue. But right now, there's a cone that squished down inside of the manhole cover.
How long has this person owned it? Haven't they owned it forever?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the blight, the blight, if we got a blight ordinance, that could help.
Be some ammunition for your efforts.
Correct.
Instead of here's a ticket, pick us. Then you don't really accomplish anything, so, understood. I don't have anything else, other than a fact, did you guys ever get the bylaws? Do you want a copy of the bylaws?
Aren't they in email?
Yeah, I think we have the bylaws, we're set out, but we can do it again.
I don't remember seeing it, but I printed them out. I always like to be paired.
Oh, you got an extra copy?
I have, there you go. There's three. Anything else, Dave?
So, thank you.
You good?
I'm good.
Janet, would you like to say anything?
With the bylaws?
Yes, sir.
I mean, the last time we addressed these were fifty years ago. Should this be something we address, should it be on your list to be looked at yearly, or?
Uh, it's in the bylaws.
Oh, it's in the bylaws?
You don't know them by heart?
That's why we gave you a copy to read it and study it, so people who is next.
I used to read that every night before bed.
I have, I have, you know, the original copy, you know, the.
Nineteen seventy-four?
It's, you know, chipped in a rock.
So, Ron, we have an annual meeting every October, first regular meeting of October. Right, these bylaws reviewed and made part of the minutes of the regular meeting. So every year, let it be said, let it be written. We were very thorough when we put these together. The entire year it took us to do this.
Yes, yeah, I was there.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to double check. So if you'd like to make changes, we could have a conversation when the time comes later in the year, or over the course of the year, if you like.
Yeah, Trish and I were talking, we we would like to see a raise.
Yep.
Oh, wait a minute.
I agree.
Compensation, we need to add another article.
Compensation is real.
Under amendments, there you go. Fees, no, no, that's what we, that's what under is, yeah. You mean, the raise that you got last year wasn't enough, Ron?
It was a hundred percent, wasn't it?
That's right.
Yes, it was.
Man, you're demanding.
I mean, we're on a roll, but if it was doubled last year, I want it doubled again this year.
I want mine triple. I want triple zero.
No, I I guess my questioning is, you know, training, if training.
Good point.
If there's any fees involved with training, we don't have a budget, or do we have anything in the budget?
Yes, we do have training and a budget for you guys, yes.
And speaking of that, are we all caught up? Yes. Just one.
I want to be on top of that training, that's it.
I don't have anything else. Anybody else have anything to offer, comment? Trish, thanks for making it. We appreciate your time.
Yes.
Making it through, with the kids, dropping them off, favorite which way?
Oh, my God, it's hysterical.
Oh, good years, fun times. Ron, so this leaves it to your agenda item, number nine.
Okay, I'm looking at, our next meeting is January eighteenth. And although we joke about money, I want to thank everybody on the committee. Just let everyone out there in TV land know, we are not paid for our time. Because I'm sure someone's gonna say.
The rumor, Ron started the rumor.
They just got a hundred percent raise.
Thank you for the clarification. We are not paid.
We are not paid, and our salary is multiplied by zero.
Times zero.
Times zero.
Square.
With that being the case, by motion, we adjourn.
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, motion carries, thus concludes at seven forty-seven, forty-three. Record, that's a record.